We have one minute. President Vermillion.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Council Chambers. I would like to call the April ninth, twenty twenty-four Hilliard City Council Regular Meeting to order. And since Mr. Greg Betts is excused tonight, I will provide some words of reflection, and then we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. How blessed we are as a community to have witnessed yesterday one of the rare and wondrous events of the celestial bodies, an event that ancients did not understand scientifically and may have ascribed supernatural powers to it. We came together as a state, nation, and world to experience the awe of the total solar eclipse as one humanity. The world's population is north of eight billion. Hilliard's population is under forty thousand. We're a very small part of the world's people, but we're an important and significant part. It's said that we are only six contacts away from everyone else on this planet. Think about that, six contacts. We really are one humanity. We really are connected together. We aren't separate from the rest of the world, we're a part of the rest of the world. It's my hope that as council members, we remember that what we do on the local level does have meaning for the rest of the world. The decisions we make in this humble chamber do affect people in other localities, in other countries. May we have deep caring and compassion for not just the people in our small community, but for all humanity. Thank you. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Cole.
Here.
Vice President Cottone.
Here.
Ms. Hale.
Here.
Mr. Teeter.
Here.
President Vermillion.
Here.
Mr. Betts and Mr. Carrier excused.
All right. Council has copies of the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Right, seeing none, those minutes stand approved. Now we'll go into Commission and Board Reports. Board of Zoning Appeals, Emily Cole.
The vacancy is posted and still accepting applications through next Monday, I believe, twenty... Next Friday. It's still open, if anyone would like to apply.
Okay. Destination Hilliard, Mr. Betts is not here. Environmental Sustainability Commission, we meet tomorrow evening. Morpsey, Ms. Crandall is not here today. Planning and Zoning Commission, Emily Cole.
We meet on Thursday.
Public Arts Commission, nothing to report. Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission.
This month's meeting was canceled.
Oh, okay. Shade Tree Commission, Andy Teeter.
No report.
Aging and Place Committee, Tina Cottone.
We met today and discussed that going forward, where our focus is on building the village and getting that started and working on our board for that venture.
Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda? All right. We have two items on the consent agenda. A TRFO, which is a transfer of ownership liquor permit request for one entertainment group located at thirty-six forty-one Fishing Road. This request was sent to planning and...
Our department, please.
Thank you. And no objections were received. This consent authorizes not to request a hearing on this liquor permit request. And then the second item is twenty-four dash R dash twenty-seven, which is reappointing a member to the Public Arts Commission. So does anybody want any of these items moved to the regular agenda for further discussion? Okay, we'll leave them as is. I would entertain a motion and second to approve the consent agenda items by voice vote.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now we are at the public portion of our meeting, and we have several people signed up to speak. I'll remind everybody again, we have a three-minute limit. We've moved the timer, so it's easier for you to see it. In addition, because I know time gets away when you're up there talking, the yellow light will light up there at the podium that tells you there's thirty seconds left, so you know you can... Well, hopefully it'll work. We haven't used it before.
No, we tested it before the meeting.
Okay, so it'll be like your thirty-second warning there. All right, so first on the list, we have April Blaine. And you just need to state the city of your residence.
April Blaine, Hilliard, Ohio. Great. Madam Chairwoman, City Manager, Honorable Members of the Council, my name is April Blaine, proud Hilliard resident, and I also serve as Lead Pastor at Hilliard UMC, just a couple of roundabouts from here. While our work as leaders is different, there are some things that our positions share in common, and one of those is that people come to us with their heartbreak and their suffering. It can be a really hard part of the job. I know there are days where it feels like a burden, and yet it is a really privileged part of our work. People come to us and bring their pain and ask us as leaders to respond, to not only see them and honor them, but listen to them enough to use the power that we do have to lead. So I know several of you on this council personally, and I'm assuming the same is true for those that I don't know. You got into this work because you care about people and because you wanted to help and make a difference in the community, and I know that about you all. So today, you're going to hear a lot from our Palestinian siblings who've gathered in community with us on the final night of their Ramadan celebration, a night equivalent in the Christian church to our Christmas Eve. And they chose to be here, bringing before us the pain and the devastating loss of life that's happening in Gaza, and the pain of being a citizen in a country that is intertwined with this conflict irrevocably. They don't bring with them the naivete that this resolution will change our national policy, but what it will communicate to the local residents of this city is that you see their pain and the devastating loss of life, and you also want it to stop. Some have said this isn't really the work of a city government body, but let's be honest, when local people are in front of you asking you to respond, they have made it a local issue. I am well aware of the depth of complexity that this issue presents. Nothing about this is simple, and yet part of our work as those who are called to lead in complex times is that we use our imagination and not our fear to discern how we will care for the needs that are right in front of us. So I urge you tonight, as our representatives, to listen really well and to resolve that you will respond, that you will use your collective imagination to respond to these local residents with compassion and dignity. This doesn't preclude you from also responding to the pain you know is being felt by other groups. We can and should do that. But to do nothing with the requests that you hear tonight is to do even more harm. I urge you to allow this to be a moment where you, our city council, embody the community that we all want Hilliard to be, a place that makes space and dignity for all of its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yasmeen Ali.
Hello, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Yasmeen Ali. I'm a nurse at Doctors Hospital. I was born and raised in Columbus, Ohio, and have lived in Hilliard my entire life. I graduated from Davidson High School in twenty sixteen, and just a few months ago, my husband and I bought our first home in Hilliard. As a nurse who worked through the COVID pandemic, I have seen firsthand the effects of death, pain, and suffering on a large population. However, none of this compares to the brutal torture currently happening in Gaza. I want to present an update on the situation in Gaza just since the start of Ramadan, when we first presented, council, with the draft of the ceasefire resolution. The Palestinian death toll was thirty-one thousand, and now only four weeks later, an additional two thousand five hundred civilians have been killed. Israel is denying humanitarian aid from entering Gaza, only allowing entry of a few aid trucks a day. On March eighteenth, there was an Integrated Food Security Phase Classification Report published stating that, quote, "Famine is imminent in northern Gaza, and if Israel continues hostilities and restricting humanitarian access, the whole of Gaza faces a risk of famine. The catastrophic levels of hunger and starvation in Gaza are the highest ever recorded on the IPC scale." Oxfam stated, "Israel has been using starvation as a weapon of war for over five months, now creating a real risk of genocide in Gaza." To add to the torture, on March twenty-fourth, Israel began prohibiting UNRWA, the main provider of humanitarian aid in Gaza, from delivering food to north Gaza. On April second, Israel directed three separate bombs to internationally target and kill seven international aid workers from World Central Kitchen. This resulted in World Central Kitchen and other aid organizations to stop their aid distributions in Gaza, causing more children to die by starvation. Since our March eleventh meeting, Israel besieged Al-Shifa Hospital, where patients were left without access to proper medical care, food, or water. When Israel withdrew from the hospital, hundreds of killed Palestinian bodies were found. Many were handcuffed, executed, burned, and some run over by Israeli tanks and bulldozers. On March twenty-sixth, there was a report presented to the United Nations stating, "By analyzing the patterns of violence in Israel's policies in its onslaught on Gaza," this report concludes that there are reasonable grounds to believe that the threshold indicating Israel's commission of genocide is met. We need to continue to advocate for an immediate permanent ceasefire from local to international levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Wood.
Good evening, esteemed council members. My name is Justin Wood. I am the Youth Director at the Nor Islamic Cultural Center, serving Hilliard and surrounding areas, and a proud parent of Noah, a second grader at Sunrise Academy. Today, I stand before you to advocate for a resolution calling for an immediate and permanent bilateral ceasefire to end the current violence in Gaza, the immediate and unconditional release by Hamas of all Israeli hostages, and by Israel of all Palestinians held without due process, and the recognition that this conflict will not be resolved militarily. Only bold, good-faith diplomatic efforts will prevail. In my capacity, I interact with individuals who have endured losses beyond comprehension. I recall the heart-wrenching story of a young man within our program whose life was shattered when he lost seventeen members of his family in a single devastating moment. His ancestral home in Gaza obliterated. The magnitude of this crisis is staggering, with at least thirty-three thousand two hundred and seven Palestinians having lost their lives, of which fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty are children. To put this into perspective, sixteen thousand students are enrolled in Hilliard City Schools. Imagine if you can the horror of losing ninety percent of those young souls. This comparison, though grim, underscores the urgent need for calling for a ceasefire. It is a plea for humanity, for the preservation of life and the peace that every child and every family deserves. Those who call for peace are often labeled controversial in the moment, yet time and again, history vindicates their stance, from Martin Luther King Junior to Mahatma Gandhi, the legacy of peace advocates teaches us a crucial lesson. Indiscriminate war is not and has never been a solution. It is a cycle of destruction that only begets more violence. Hilliard leaders and educators model dialogue, diplomacy, and understanding in resolving conflicts every day. That's who we are. That's a voice that needs to be heard. I understand the concerns about taking a stance that might seem to conflict with the sympathies of some. However, advocating for a ceasefire is not about taking sides. It's about recognizing the dignity and worth of every human life, regardless of border, color, or creed. A resolution for a permanent ceasefire is a nod toward Dr. King's timeless declaration that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. I urge you to seize the opportunity for Hilliard to lead by example, showing that even at the local level, we understand the responsibility to champion global peace and justice, and that we stand with all of our residents affected by the violence. In closing, I urge you to consider the impact of the proposed resolution as a beacon of hope. By advocating for peace, we affirm our values. We demonstrate our commitment to peace and justice and to fundamental human rights. Let us join over one hundred American cities, towns, and villages who have passed ceasefire resolutions and stood for peace.
Thank you. Reema Dabub.
Hello, City Council members. My name is Reema Dabub. I have lived, worked, and volunteered in Hilliard for the past fifteen years. Tonight, I want to tell you a portion of my family's history. My grandparents were born and raised in Palestine, as were their grandparents and their grandparents as far back as anyone can remember. My family is from Al-Biru, a village over two thousand years old, located a few miles from the city of Acca. When my grandparents lived there, it was a larger village with about fifteen hundred residents. My grandfather's family owned land, and my grandfather farmed the land and was a merchant. By nineteen forty-eight, Palestinians across the country knew that things were getting dangerous with regards to the Zionist attempt to establish a Jewish-exclusive state in Palestine. In March nineteen forty-eight, Plan de Let, the Zionist military plan to take over Palestine, was enacted. It was a plan for systemic ethnic cleansing and destruction of Palestinian towns and villages, and that's what happened to my family's village. In late May nineteen forty-eight, after hearing the news of village after village being targeted by Zionist terrorist groups, villages were being forced out under threat of death, subjected to executions and other brutalities, and villages then being demolished to prevent return. My grandfather and other men in the village decided to find a safe place to shelter for their families until the war was over and it would be safe for them to return. They did not expect to be gone for long, so they went north to find safety in Lebanon. My grandmother had two toddlers at the time and was heavily pregnant. She gave birth and then left her home with the other women from the village just a couple of days later. They walked for days until they reached Lebanon. The village of Al-Biru was attacked by Zionist forces soon after they left. The Zionist forces destroyed my family's village. The homes, mosque, church, and cemetery were all destroyed. Israel established two settlements on the outskirts of the village lands. The majority of the village still remains unpopulated, and Palestinians like my family are prevented from returning. Even those families who remain in Palestine are prohibited from returning to their lands in Al-Biru. This is my family's story. Three generations after nineteen forty-eight, after over seven hundred and fifty thousand Palestinians were expelled and five hundred-plus Palestinian towns ethnically cleansed, there are millions of Palestinians who share similar stories of their family's Nakba or catastrophe. This is the result of Zionism. This is Zionism's past and present. Zionism is the founding ideology of Israel. It is a settler colonial ideology based on the erasure of the indigenous people and supremacy of the colonizer. It is a racist and exclusionary ideology that requires the dehumanization of the native Palestinians. This process of colonization and annexation continues today to the detriment of Palestinians in all of historic Palestine, including the Gaza Strip. This is one of many reasons why we need an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nahla Saleh.
Hello. My name is Nahla Saleh. I grew up in this community and used to work as a teacher for Hilliard City Schools. I'm here to speak on behalf of the kids who cannot speak for themselves, who are being bombed and burned alive as they sleep by the weapons paid for by you and me. If we're going to continue to send the bombs, then we should listen to what they actually do to children. I'd like to share with you just one of the thousands of horrific videos coming out of Gaza daily. It's of a little boy about my son's age, probably four or five. His little body is squirming as he's being placed on the hospital floor while doctors try to do whatever they can for him. He's so badly burned and charred, almost completely black all over his body, that you can't see any of his facial features. He's desperately trying to breathe or scream in agony, but all he can do is let out some moaning, grunting, and gurgling sounds, probably because his airway is filling with blood. I don't know this child's name because he's one of the many kids who could not be identified. He died hours later. This child, like so many in Gaza, was forced to die a slow and agonizing death as Israel continues to block the most basic medical aid from getting to them. No morphine, no anesthetic to ease their pain. Kids are walking around with fourth-degree burns unable to be treated because Israel has literally destroyed every single hospital in Gaza, killing over four hundred doctors, nurses, medics, and kidnapping hundreds more. Doctors report that they have been having to change out of their scrubs because wearing them is like putting a target on their back. They are systematically targeting anything that could support life in Gaza in order to ethnically cleanse its population. This is not about Hamas. This started a long time ago. They've targeted all the water distribution sites, bakeries, humanitarian organizations that could distribute food. They had already killed nearly two hundred aid workers when just a week ago, seven internationals from the World Central Kitchen were also killed. They gave them a direct route, told them it was safe, and then chased them down by bombing three different marked vehicles, and then they denied it. They were sending a message. They knew that by killing them, all international aid would stop, and two million Palestinians would continue to starve. The truth is that under Israel's occupation, Palestinian children have never stopped dying. How could there have been a ceasefire in place when nearly two thousand three hundred Palestinian children have been killed by Israel from the year two thousand to twenty twenty-three in just three years, including forty-three children killed in just the nine months prior to October seventh? All of these kids are counting on you and me to speak up for them. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I just have some paperwork to give you with some extra info.
You can hand it to our clerk. Thank you. Safiya Shalash.
Evening, council. My name is Safiya Shalash, and I'm a first-generation Palestinian-American. I have been a Hilliard resident for twelve years. I work as a pediatric physical therapist. You have heard numerous testimonies about the unfolding genocide taking place against Palestinians in Gaza. No words can encompass how horrific the past six months have been. It is essential to note that there has also been an escalation of persecution against Palestinians in the West Bank. Individuals often deny that Israel is committing the crime of apartheid. However, one step into the West Bank would make denying it difficult. I wish I could tell you that my memories of visiting my homeland for the first time and walking through my grandfather's olive groves and praying at the Oxl mosque, one of Islam's holiest sites, weren't riddled with images of a brutal military occupation. The separation wall, a large concrete barrier running about four hundred miles long and thirty feet tall in some areas, is a visual that is hard to miss. Movement within the West Bank is severely restricted, as there are illegal Israeli settlements and hundreds of checkpoints luried across the territory, some of which sit at the front doorstep of Palestinian homes. While many argue that these checkpoints, the separation wall, and occupation soldiers exist to maintain security, the truth is more sinister. These security measures, which mirror cages, exist to subjugate, dehumanize, and break down the will of the Palestinian people. Palestinians are required to wait hours and are often interrogated. Permission to pass through is often inconsistent and rests upon the mercy of occupation soldiers. These restrictive checkpoints impose daily challenges on the Palestinian people. An example of this can be seen in what would be deemed a simple trip of ten miles from my hometown in Ramallah to Jerusalem. This distance is shorter than my daily commute from my home in Hilliard to the hospital where I work, yet traveling to Jerusalem as a Palestinian requires a special visa and takes multiple hours due to the roadblocks and checkpoints. Sadly, many Palestinians living in the West Bank have never been allowed to visit the Oxl mosque or the Church of Nativity despite their proximity. In addition to movement restrictions, Palestinians also face unprecedented military raids, mass arrests, and executions. Twenty twenty-three was deemed the deadliest year for Palestinians living in the West Bank. Israeli occupation forces killed more than two hundred and thirty-four Palestinian civilians before October seventh. Palestinians are denied their basic human rights. Palestinians want their freedom, and they deserve their freedom. There is nothing controversial about these statements, as every human being deserves to be free. As a community that values freedom, equality, and diversity, it is imperative that Hilliard put out a statement condemning the violence Israel is committing against Palestine in both the West Bank and Gaza Strip. You must call for an immediate and lasting ceasefire.
Thank you. Zainah Kokar.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Zainah Kokar, and I've lived in Hilliard pretty much all my life. Me and my sister graduated from Hilliard Davidson High School, and I currently work at Hilliard City Schools' preschool. I grew up proudly exclaiming that I was Syrian and Pakistani, and it was not until more recently that I understood I was more. My grandfather, Majito, and his family were forced from their home in the nineteen forty-eight Nakba, long before October seventh. He was two. His family was from Yafa, and he tells me that they had a beautiful orange orchard there. They say Yafa oranges are the best you'll ever have, but I wouldn't know, as Majito's father had to leave his oranges, his livelihood, behind. His family went to Syria as refugees, and that's how I became Syrian and Pakistani. I now proudly exclaim I'm Palestinian as well. I'm a Palestinian who's never gotten to see my beloved Palestine. I struggle to communicate what I wouldn't give to take Majito back to a free Palestine, to sit on the shore in Yafa and eat oranges together. And though I no longer have family to visit in Palestine, in every distraught child, I see my little cousins, my younger brother, and my students, and trust me when I say I hug them a little tighter now. In every woman crying out for her child, I see my mother, my aunts, my grandmother. And in every man who attempts to keep their world from falling apart, I see my father, my uncles, Majito. And I can't help but wonder why no one else sees what I see. Is it because we don't look like you? Do you have a hard time empathizing because we aren't the perfect pale-skinned, blond-haired, blue-eyed victims that you'd like us to be? Can you not just for a second imagine that it was your child, your sibling, your grandfather under the rubble? Would you not then be begging for someone, anyone, to do something to stop this? Throughout all my time in Hilliard schools, the message "You matter" was preached so intently, but it seems all like a facade, because if I matter so much, then why can't I get anyone to listen to me? Not even the district that drilled that message into my head. How am I supposed to teach this message to my preschoolers, the next generation, when it's proven time and time again to be a lie? Show us we matter. Call for a ceasefire. Make Hilliard a place I can be proud to live and work, because right now, all I am is tired and ashamed.
Thank you. Sammy Taba.
Good evening. My name is Sammy Taba. I reside in Dublin, but am within Hilliard City School limits. As a physician who specializes in the care of high-risk pregnancies, I feel morally compelled to shed light on the horrors that pregnant women are facing in Gaza. As of today, at least thirty-three thousand people have been murdered in Gaza, seventy percent of which are women and children. According to the case brought to the ICJ by South Africa, two mothers are estimated to be killed every hour in Gaza. They go on to say that there are multiple eyewitness accounts of pregnant women being killed by IDF soldiers, including while trying to access healthcare. Each month, an estimated fifty-five hundred pregnant women in Gaza give birth. This is currently occurring in unsafe conditions, often with no clean water, much less medical assistance. Today, there are less than twelve partially functional hospitals left in Gaza. Recently, the IDF completely torched and destroyed Al-Shifa Hospital, which is the flagship hospital of Gaza. This concluded one of the few remaining maternity wards left in the region. A recently published editorial in the respected journal The Lancet states that many mothers are being d- that many mothers are being discharged within as little as three hours after giving birth due to the reduced number of beds resulting from damage to hospitals. So currently, pregnant women in Gaza would be considered lucky to give birth in a hospital. When they are able to get to a functioning hospital, those that require cesarean deliveries are doing so without anesthesia. Basic resources that are taken for granted in our country, such as blood products and medications to reduce bleeding risk, are scarce, causing women to die of obstetric hemorrhage at alarming rates. Furthermore, rates of miscarriage, stillbirth, and premature birth are skyrocketing. There have been reports of pregnant women who have stopped feeling fetal movement for weeks and have not been able to present to a hospital to see if their unborn child is still alive. Now, I ask all in this room to stop. Close your eyes, especially those of you in this room who have experienced pregnancy. Think of the hardships you've experienced in a resource-rich environment such as our own. Now, place yourself in the middle of Gaza, pregnant, starving, cold, injured, afraid. You've lost most, if not all, of your loved ones. It's not safe to get to a hospital from fear of being hit by sniper fire or shrapnel. You are experiencing a pregnancy complication, and know that giving birth outside of the hospital is a threat to your and your baby's life. You're alone, and the world has turned your back, turned their backs on you. As a fellow human being who has seen how bad pregnancy can get under the best conditions, I implore you to call for the end of this suffering, this genocide. Do the right thing and call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hannah Masood?
Good evening. My name is Hannah Masood. I live in Columbus within Hilliard City Schools. I have a daughter at Sunrise Academy and a son at Hilliard Station. I'd like to start by asking you to visualize the last event that you attended in a nationwide arena. Then you concede up to 20,000 concertgoers, hockey fans. Now visualize this. The dead bodies of just the adult Palestinians killed in the past six months by Israeli forces would fill the arena to capacity. Over 14,000 of the dead are children, and it's estimated that we'll reach 16,000 dead kids in upcoming weeks. The total number of students currently in Hilliard Schools is just over 16,000. I'm not going to ask you to visualize it, but just consider that since October, US-funded Israeli forces will soon have killed the same number of kids that make up the entire student body at Hilliard Schools. It is easy to say that this is not happening to us, but Hilliard continuously redefines who "us" is. Some know the story of the emancipated slave Yammer Merchant, who in the early 1800s came to what is now Hilliard and settled as a free, black landowner almost 30 years before the Emancipation Proclamation. Merchant Park in Old Hilliard is named in his honor. I share this story because it shows that in some of the most devastating times in this country's history, Hilliard allowed this story of humanity. We are here today asking for another show of humanity. So many recent conversations here and across the region are about how we will manage growth happening in central Ohio and how we will make place for this future "us." But our success does not depend just on if we zone for multi-use housing or how we implement LinkUS plans. The foundations of Hilliard are not built with cement and stone. They are built on the values that all humans are worthy of dignity and respect. Our pride in Hilliard should lay in stories about how a freed slave was able to settle and thrive here, not in an ability to stay silently neutral in the face of a nationwide arena full of dead bodies or the slaughter of the equivalent of all of Hilliard's children. Hilliard's diversity includes many Palestinians, many Muslims, to whom stopping the genocide in Gaza is urgent. Driving through town, you can see Muslim-owned restaurants, groceries, and all sorts of business. It is also home to Muslim doctors, lawyers, community leaders. We are a thriving, contributing part of the "us." We call Hilliard home and contribute to its success because the values align with ours. A city resolution won't immediately stop violence on the other side of the world, but you have been elected to speak up for these values, and it is that that I am here demanding of you today. Also being said is that the term ceasefire is controversial, but so often standing for what is right is labeled controversial in the moment. Who in the 1800s would have not seen controversy in allowing a black man to own land? And yet, today, we all know the right thing to do. Calling for an immediate, permanent ceasefire in Gaza is the right thing to do today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mahmoud Abdulrazul?
Hello. I am a resident of Hilliard. I've owned a house since 2017 here. I've been at Ohio State since 2001. I don't have a speech prepared, because honestly, for the past month, I've been having conversations with you in my head, all of you, because it's been difficult to understand how you can't empathize or see or recognize the pain of the people who live in Hilliard. And I'm trying to make sense of why, what possible reasons. I know you're good people, human beings. You say you value freedom. And so, one of the things that I think is that the Gaza Strip, it's actually impossible for anybody else on Earth to know what it's like to live. I don't know what it's like to live there. I don't think most people here who haven't been to Gaza don't know what it's like to live there. That place should not exist. Gaza, the Gaza Strip, shouldn't exist. Think about it. Why is it there? Why are there 2 million people in a 10-by-5-mile strip of land, blocked in by 30-meter walls, can't go anywhere? Been there for generations, three, four generations. Why are they there? Those are all refugees, and the children of refugees, and the grandchildren of refugees who've been trapped. The world forgot about them. They've been trapped there for 75 years. And the worst part is, the villages, the towns that they're from, they're originally from, the land there is still empty if they can just get over that Zionist wall. That land is there. Those villages that they're originally from are walking distance and have been for 75 years. If they can walk past that wall, they'll get there in five minutes. That's where they're from. But imagine, they've all been rounded up and put into, what word would you call it? You want to call it a ghetto? Do you want to call it a concentration camp? Call it whatever you want, but think about, what else is there? Give me a reasonable word to call what they live in. And on top of that, they've been bombed and bombed and bombed. The 13,000 kids that they talk about that have been killed in these past six months, that means they're under 18. Not a single one of those kids has had a chance to live a life, not one. 17 years Gaza has been, they couldn't even dream. They couldn't think of, oh, maybe one day I'll go to college. I'll get out of Gaza and go. Because they've been under siege for 17 years. So what possibility of a life could they have built for themselves? And ask yourselves a simple question. Is Palestine free? Can Palestinians, are they free now? They're not. So free Palestine.
Thank you. Nora Dabdo?
Hi. My name is Nora Dabdo. I spoke at the meeting on March 11, which happened to be the first day of Ramadan. We broke our first fast of Ramadan right here in this room while our community was speaking to you advocating for a ceasefire. And here we are exactly 30 days later on the last day of Ramadan. We're going to break our last fast of Ramadan right here in this room advocating for a ceasefire. This is the equivalent to our Christmas Eve. And here we are advocating for a ceasefire instead of celebrating because we have no joy while our families are enduring a genocide. I originally thought that putting this in terms that you might understand would help you comprehend how important this is to us. I originally thought that maybe if we could explain ourselves clearly, maybe if we provided you with the blatantly obvious facts, maybe if we were eloquent and passionate and informed, that maybe you would hear us, maybe you would acknowledge us. But when you look at me, what do you see? Do you see the hijab? Do you see my knee that makes your mouth stumble? Do you see you, or do you see another? When you look at us, what do you think? Do you think that we don't act like you, pray like you, parent like you, love and hope like you? Do you think that we're not like you? Do you think that we're not equal to you? Because that's the message we're getting loud and clear. We're coming to you, our Hilliard community, our leaders, and saying, we are hurting our people, over 33,000 annihilated by Israel, 14,000 precious children slaughtered by Israel, our families violently uprooted, besieged, kidnapped, tortured, left barely surviving in tents in the bombed ruins of their homes, literally starving to death by Israel's policy of intentional, man-made famine. And your response? You're sorry, but you can't. Your response, thoughts and prayers? Your response, the word ceasefire is problematic, divisive. Your response, repeating unfounded claims that this word ceasefire, this word that's been used by the president and the vice president and 87 members of Congress in over 100 US cities, by the Pope on Easter Sunday, by hundreds of religious leaders, by the UN. Somehow, this word has a subversive meaning when we use it. We're asking you to recognize our humanity, to recognize that the lives of our people are worthy. We're asking you to acknowledge the killing of innocent civilians is unacceptable. We're asking you to say that the killing must stop. But you value unsupported claims, twisted definitions, efforts to avoid difficult positions over acknowledging the value of our lives. You are comfortable accepting justifications for the slaughter of our people. You so easily accept any pretext to avoid recognizing our humanity. Message received. I hope hearing this makes you listen. I hope hearing this makes you think. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last person I have on the list. Was there anybody else that we missed? Okay. Thank you all for coming out. I'll give you a minute to vacate the room if you'd like, and then we can continue on with the business. We don't have any ordinances tonight. We have two resolutions. Will the clerk please read 24-R-28 by title only?
Authorizing the conditional use for a massage therapist use personal services establishment at 5232 Norwich Street, known as Vibe Well, within the OHRD Old Hilliard Residential District.
Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt? Second. All right. Is there a staff report?
I'm not sure if Mr. Talentino has left, but as you note in your packet, this is a relatively minor.
It's back.
Oh, here he is. Where's your binder?
Good evening, members of council. So this is two applications for conditional uses at that property. They are listed in the zoning code as conditional uses, and they require planning commission and council approval. So this is a former residence. It was converted to an office building, or at least a commercial building. You can see there's new parking spaces that were installed here last year. And there are two garages here that have two spaces each for those. The post-conditional uses are... One is an esthetician and one is a massage therapist. And so you can see, this represents where their signs to identify their tenant spaces on the outside would be. And then the shaded portions are where they'd be on the inside. So you can see there's a number of office rooms or commercial use rooms in this building. And these would be on the first floor. And you can see that they're relatively small. One of the conditions that the planning commission put on for each of them was that they have one chair or table, so one client at a time. These are the types of uses that... The number of trips generated is really based on the number of chairs that you have. So limiting that, and it's such a small space, that I think that will not be a problem. The signs are not up for review by council, but were approved by the planning commission. But it's really just to show the nature of what they're planning to use. So... There are two motions, one for each of the conditional uses. And so you can see that for each of these, the conditions included... The first thing was limiting the number of stations, and then the second was getting the zoning certificate. I should mention that the massage therapist, there's an additional registration as that type of a use that was put into code some years ago, as we had some problems with some of the other massage therapists. Not massage therapists, human trafficking massage establishment uses that were done with Fretton County Task Force. So that's why the additional step. It requires them to be registered with the state and so forth. And the proposed use was registered at a different location. It's just actually changing the location to this site. So we don't have any problems with either use and recommending approval for both of those. Do you have questions about either of those?
What are the other offices going to be used for?
I don't know. Haven't seen...
Can I ask?
Haven't seen zoning certificates for the other ones.
Can I ask the applicant? Oh, please, if that's okay.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lauren McKinnis. I work for Westwood. We only have one other one that has signed a lease right now, and he works for a technology company, so it's just him in the office. There will be nobody else coming in. And that's the only other lease that's been signed. We have one other guy that's looking, but he's like a financial, he's in finances. So he might have some clients coming in and out, but he's already said, because his office will be upstairs, that he's probably going to meet them or go to their home. So he won't really have clients coming in, but he hasn't officially signed anything.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Vice President Cattone?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
S50.
24-R-28 is passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law.
Will the clerk please read 24-R-29 by title only?
Authorizing the conditional use for an esthetician and use personal service establishment at 5232 Norwich Street, known as Color Therapy Spa, within the OHRD Old Hilliard Residential District.
Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
Someone.
Second.
Okay. And we already have the staff report, or is there more?
Yeah, no, just one thing. The personal service use, that covers beauty salons, tattoo parlour. I mean, it covers a wide variety of things, but personal services is how it's listed in the code, and this meets those requirements.
Thank you. All right. If there are no more questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Vice President Cattone?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
S50.
24-R-29 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law.
That concludes the business portion of the meeting. I have no communication, any updates from the city manager assistant?
I just want to publicly acknowledge yesterday's event that Parks and Recreation staff put together. Just phenomenal. I would have never guessed that we'd have more than 1,000 people coming together in the afternoon, celebrating this kind of event. the afternoon, celebrating this kind of event. Really fantastic job.
I want to second that. That was an incredible event. I want to give our staff kudos for all the work they did. It was a safe event. It was family-oriented, and everybody was having a great time. And one thing I noticed was, I didn't see a whole lot of my friends from Hilliard there, but I ran into friends of mine from Upper Arlington and friends of mine from Worthington, and all of them were just raving about how great of an event it was and how cool downtown was. And also a shout out to our police officers. When we found the boy that was separated from his mom in like three minutes, that was pretty incredible. That was really neat. So yeah, fabulous event, and it really shined light well on Hilliard. It was wonderful.
I agree. It was super cool. And I think next year, or I guess we'll be dead in 2099, but next time, we need to do a flash mob with all the city staff. It would just be awesome.
It was an amazing event, just amazing. All right, any ideas for council discussion? Emily.
I am new and learning on the floor here, but to be honest, I can't keep sitting through meetings where we have residents come and ask us to acknowledge their pain, and then we encourage them to leave after they speak. So my question is, I'm reading the rules, and it says that we can bring items up for discussion. So that's what I'm proposing, is that we discuss how we as a council would like to move forward. So I need a second to have that discussion. Is that right in 4.03?
So it would be, it's a second to propose legislation, there's not a second required to open the discussion in this agenda.
Okay. And I would like to open that discussion.
Are you, so would that be for proposing legislation, then?
Are you proposing legis-
What is it that you want to discuss? The fact that they're suggested that they leave when their business is done, or you'd want to discuss what they're asking us for?
I would like to discuss what they're asking us for.
Okay.
I do not have a piece of legislation that I'm asking that we discuss.
And just to note that for purposes of the rule and my interpretation of it is that for discussion, no second is necessary. For proposal of legislation, a second is necessary. Once that occurs, you don't have to have written legislation tonight, but once that occurs, if there's a second, then it will be placed on a subsequent meeting for its first reading and introduction. In the meantime, the council member proposing the legislation would have to provide a proposal in writing of what that legislation is. My office would review it to form, and then it would be on that next meeting.
Thank you.
And that legislation would have to be available tonight?
That legislation would not have to be available tonight.
Okay. It can be turned into your office in the next couple of days.
Correct.
Well, I guess I'll start. I was planning on doing this at the next meeting, but since you've opened it. I don't have a piece of legislation written, but since my efforts to do a proclamation failed, my plan is to introduce some legislation as a resolution that we can vote on. And if we want to put that forward tonight, and then we can vote on it at the next meeting,
I agree with Emily. It's heartbreaking to sit here, meeting after meeting, and hear the suffering. And it's not just at the meeting. Obviously, I hear about this every day. You hear about it every day. It affects our community members. As I said in my opening reflection, you know, we're only six contacts away from everybody else on this earth. That's not very many contacts. We're all united as one. We are one humanity on this earth, and I think we need to understand that and act accordingly.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I motion to introduce legislation at the next meeting, then, for a resolution. I don't know when I'm calling it yet, but.
Well, I think the rule does not say that it's a motion. It just says that a member can propose legislation from the floor with the support of another member. The thing about making a motion is it would then call for a vote of the whole body on whether to adopt that motion. So what we could do based upon this discussion is say that there is support for proposing legislation from President Vermillion and Councilmember Cole, at the very least, to move forward.
Yes.
All right.
I guess, as we move forward with this, I think we have to be very careful of what our resolution says, that it needs to have some balance to it. I think we can do that by acknowledging the suffering, acknowledging the pain that our community is going through, persons in our community. But we all know there's political lines in this, and I think we need to be careful.
And I think if people have been following the news lately that Hamas has rejected several ceasefires, so I don't know what calling for a ceasefire would do.
In my opinion, even if Hamas or Israel or anyone rejects the ceasefire, acknowledging what our residents have been begging us for is worthwhile.
I agree with Andy. We can acknowledge suffering and just have to tread carefully.
So I will note two items. One, that I think anybody viewing this meeting or reading the minutes should not take anybody's statement here as support for or opposition to the ultimate resolution. Just note that this is for purposes of proposing legislation. And secondly, that my review will only be for approval as to form of the resolution and not to content of the substantive content of the resolution.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
I have not read it for a while, but the resolution that Columbus and Cleveland passed would be along the lines that I'm thinking.
Does someone have a copy of that? I've not seen that.
Yeah, Emily sent it to us at one time, and it's out there.
Okay. Maybe I've seen it. I don't have it on me.
We can get that to it.
I think it's from, I had it March 26th. I could just resend to all.
I'm sorry, Peggy, I didn't understand what you-
She's going to resend it to all.
I pulled it up. She sent it on March 26th. I will resend it to everybody.
So, any other discussion? Okay. All right. I think that's it, then. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're now adjourned.